And we are now live on YouTube. Mayor, if you want to begin the meeting.
Sure. Good morning, everyone. I will now call to order the August 10th, 2020 Committee of the Whole Meeting for the Revere School Committee. We have a few items on the agenda. We will begin with public speak. Or actually, we'll begin with a roll call, I apologize, and then jump into public speak, roll call of the members.
Mrs. Bronston Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. D'Ambrosio?
Yes.
Mr. Ferranti?
Here.
Ms. Gravalese?
Here.
Mr. Sinella?
Present.
Ms. Ty?
Here.
Mayor Arigo?
Here.
Dr. Kelly, do we have, do we have some folks lined up for public speak?
Um, I can, there are.
We can.
I don't see anybody with their hand up.
Okay, I guess we would encourage anyone who is interested, any participants that are interested in speaking to please raise your hand. We'd like to limit conversation to three minutes. And when you do speak, please, if you feel comfortable, share your name and address with us for the record. I do see one hand raised. Dr. Kelly?
Jody, say. Yeah. Jody, you can go ahead and speak. I think she has lowered her hand, so.
I think she's muted.
I've unmuted her twice. She appears to have lowered her hand. I don't.
Okay.
Jody, do you want to try to unmute and say something?
Sorry, that was a mistake. I don't need to say anything.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no, nobody else raising their hand, we will, we will move on to a discussion of the final reopening plans. Dr. Kelly, do you want to kick us off? And then if any member, when members have questions, just raise your hand, let me know. Dr. Kelly?
Okay, I did just touch the and there was one. There are two new comments here that I can use if you want, Brian?
Sure.
So the first one is dated July 26th. The Revere School Committee members said that we thought of this I'm writing to express my question. We talked about in reopening high school in fact. To echo the section highlighted in the management.
Can't hear him.
Yeah, Dr. Kelly, your, your, your audio is a little bit light.
Oh, God, okay. I don't know. My volume is up all of the way.
That's a little bit, that's better, yeah.
Like many other RPS teachers and educators across the state, I'm concerned that in-person hybrid reopening in September will be rushed and unsafe. Along with the MTA, I advocate a careful phase reopening of schools, including adequate time to plan and change pedagogical protocols, adequate funding for cleaning and PPE, provisions for testing for staff and students. Revere families have already been hit disproportionately by illness and death during this crisis, and the suffering will be compounded during the spikes that will inevitably follow the reopening of the economy. Slow and cautious reopening and the option to return to virtual learning and when is necessary will be I am terrified to return to school at Revere High School. The building has poor ventilation and the facilities are crumbling in many areas. There are broken windows, cobwebs, and stains in my classroom that have been there since before I began 12 years ago. While I spend plenty of my own time and money cleaning in my own classroom or shared spaces are, our shared spaces are often filthy, and no amount of sanitizing spray can make me feel comfortable in that building during a pandemic. If forced to return, I will have to accept changing in and out of clothes every time I go home, moving out of my own bedroom where my seven-month-old baby sleeps, and not seeing my high-risk parents for the foreseeable future. I love my students, but these are not choices that teachers should be forced to make when there is a parent. The MTA's proposal will ensure that we have adequate resources to implement the safest procedures possible in person. Caution and equity as considerations sincerely and to Revere High School. And there was one other question from Maria Romano. Asked, will the remote classes be more structured this time around? Last time, there was no structure.
Okay, any, any members have any comments? Seeing none, we'll, we'll move on to discussion of the reopening plan. Dr. Kelly, do you want to walk us through?
So I hope you all got a chance to look at the plan. I want to thank everybody who worked on it for the incredible number of hours they spent really thinking about what would make sense and, and what would be helpful to our children and our families while still making sure that staff and students and everybody involved in the school department is safe. Sorry. And so they worked, as you saw, in three different levels. The first was the teaching and learning team that focused on those aspects of our reopening plan. They described a little bit of what a hybrid model would look like with students cohort A and cohort B, where those cohorts would alternate the week. And so we envisioned a plan for most of our kids back in the day. And one and then have one week of in-person classroom, followed by a week of at-home learning outside of the classroom. And that, it would, even the at-home learning week was intended to be structured and include synchronous learning with some teachers helping students work through their assignments for the remote learning week. As most of you, as you all know, and I'm sure our Vinnie in the community know, on Thursday, after a second week of COVID positivity rates above six, there's strong advice that we, instead of doing a hybrid model, move to a remote model to begin the school year. And before we talk more about that, I'll just briefly mention that the full in-person model was not a serious consideration for us because the overcrowding in our schools would not allow us to open that way and still have the necessary social distancing and reduced group community getting together, even in one classroom, if we tried to come back all together at the same time. So our focus was on hybrid and remote was an option. The full in-person was not really an option for us. It appears right now that we'll be, with the, with the school committee's vote, focusing on a fully remote start to the school year. However, however, our intention will be to get back to a hybrid model as soon as it is safe to do so. And naturally, we're still working with the Revere Teachers Association. We still have to begin contract negotiations with our other bargaining units. But because the teachers are the largest group, it makes sense to start with them first. And so we're hoping that we can on what that's going to look like and start working in that direction in the coming weeks. But I'll pause there and just see if there are any questions on the teaching and learning piece of the.
Any members have any questions or comments? Mr. Ferranti?
Oh, Michael, you're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Assuming that we go back to remote, is there a possibility that the teachers would be able to teach out of their classrooms?
Certainly, yeah, I don't, I don't see why not. If teachers were teaching in their classroom, they still wouldn't be worried about large groups of people being together. It would be one person in a room by themselves for the most part. If they did, if we do come back with teachers in person, that actually would facilitate some of the evaluation pieces. It would make it easier for supervisors to observe the work the teachers are doing with their previous classes. And even, you know, as long as people were staying socially distant, there could be some in-person professional developments as well.
Does that have to be negotiated for them to go back in the classrooms, even if the kids are there or not?
I would say that that's in respect of working conditions that we would want to discuss with the union, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ferranti. Any other members have any questions or comments? Mrs. Rizzo?
Muted.
I'm not muted. And just, you know, realizing the needs and how to prioritize the special needs and the ELL, what does that look like for them? Is it hybrid? Is it remote? And if it is hybrid or in-person, what safety precautions are we taking for not just the students, but the educators themselves?
So all of the safety precautions are described in the plan, and we would take those for the raw special needs and our English learner students as well. We would hope to be able to work out a plan that allows some of our more at-risk students, such as students in sub-separate classrooms and at levels of language acquisition, to come in and in-person learning in small groups. And both groups. Folks work with special needs.
Dr. Kelly, Dr. Kelly, you're breaking up a little bit, sorry.
All right. Um, I'm in my office, and I think that I'm having internet problems. But anyway, can you hear me now? Is that better?
Yeah.
Yes.
I think that the PPE we would provide as described in the reopening plan would be more significant for teachers who are working with the severe special needs kids who often have different kinds of toileting needs and other issues where there might be closer contact than what would occur with a typically developing adolescent or younger student. So I don't know if I'm directly answering you, Stacy, or if you want me to say more than that.
Well, does it look like we would go into a hybrid-type model for those students? I mean, I just see the pros and the cons of it.
We want to offer that to parents. And for those parents who feel like the child would benefit from in-person learning in a small group environment like that, then we should offer it.
Okay. Thank you.
Again, everything is subject to negotiation, so there is that piece to acknowledge.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Rizzo. Any other comments or questions? Mr. D'Ambrosio?
To follow up on Mrs. Rizzo's, I know the nature of the negotiations. But when would you estimate that we have an answer with regard to the types of resources and model that most students with extra and differing needs in the district, the resources they'll receive and the way they'll receive them? When do you think we'll know?
What do you mean?
Sorry, you've cut out.
What do you mean by resources? Do you mean the PPE?
I mean, the, the way in which they'll actually engage in their schooling.
So we are going to, we are going to survey parents next week, this week, actually, sorry. That survey is ready to be, is almost finished. It's going to go to translation tonight. And then go out to families tomorrow so we can understand exactly where parents are and what they want for their children.
Thank you.
Okay. Any, any other members? So at this point, the chair will, oh, Mrs. Rizzo. You're muted.
Are we just discussing the learning portion right now?
Right now, we are focused on teaching and learning.
Okay.
Dr. Mo Cava, could you look at the message I sent you?
You know, I'm sorry. Mayor, through you, just what type of training will be given to our families to support them with remote learning? I know it said it in the plans, but I was just wondering what type?
So we're obviously going to have to do that remotely because we're going to be in a remote environment. But each school and each staff will set up a training protocol for those parents. It's going to be different to the elementary level than it would be at the secondary or the high school level. But the schools will set that up independently. We have advice from one of our partners at Ariadne Labs that after the school makes their final decision about what model we're going to go with today, we make some of the decisions that you're going to make today, that we should transfer ownership from there to the school level so that plan directly that includes the needs of the students and the, and the families at that particular school.
Thank you.
One last question?
Mr. Ferranti, sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Diane, would, how many days would the parents be, be able to get the training that they need? And would it be done the same time that the teachers are doing theirs?
Yes, so we would want, we would start the training before school actually starts for kids so that the teachers would have that training in it. I mean, the parents would have that training in advance. And there would obviously be multiple times that parents would sign up and participate. You must log on Tuesday at this time. Our goal is to help families, so of course, our plan will be thoughtful in that way.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Ty?
I'm assuming there'll be ongoing support as well? Is that correct?
Yes, yeah. And we are working with our IT department to set up an IT assistance program for our PM and for staff.
Thank you.
Okay.
I, I saw something that said Mrs. Gravalese has her hand up.
In the attention section.
Yeah, I think she, she left, and she may be trying to get back in.
Okay. I promoted her.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Somehow I must have been in connection with.
Three phones ringing at the same time.
I got, I got shifted over, so I'm back, thank you.
You guys kind of monitor that stuff for us. All right, so further into the teaching and learning portion, you saw three sample schedules. And again, I want to emphasize that getting touched, are you guys hearing it?
Yep.
I'm muting if you're not speaking. That's better. So a little further into the teaching and learning section, we did put together three sample schedules of what school might look like for the elementary, for the middle, and at the high school level. And this is assuming that we're in a remote learning environment. And one of the things that we were cognizant of, or a couple of the things we're cognizant of in developing this remote learning is that families need more synchronous learning. Where students actually log on and engage in a lesson with their teacher and then have an assignment to do after that. Notice that the, these schedules presented here incorporate pieces like that, some of which are whole group and some of which are small group. You'll also notice that we have invested time for different kinds of asynchronous work or independent work, office hours, that's called sometimes, where teachers can work individually or where students can request additional support from a teacher if they're struggling with something, and that's built in every day. We've worked in advisory time so that we can be addressing the social emotional needs of students as well as the academic needs of students. And we anticipate, as you can see from these schedules, that class periods would be roughly 40 minutes. So synchronous times that they are online with a teacher would be roughly 40 or 45 minutes. And then there would be a break so that the kids aren't going from one Zoom meeting to another Zoom meeting to another one, and neither are the teachers. So that was part of our planning process there. But what I'm describing, I want to explain is something that we're describing, the vast majority of our kids would operate under this kind of program that is a little bit more malleable. And we anticipate it's going to start remote. But as I mentioned before, would hopefully phase into hybrid as soon as it's safe to do so, and ultimately would phase back to all in-person learning. We know that aside from those students, we are going to have a group of students who can't come back when we come back hybrid or in-person and are going to remain remote. We're working on a separate system for those kids who are going to be remote all year long. We have worked with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to procure an online learning management system. And we would have certain teachers, perhaps who are immunocompromised themselves, who would instruct that fully remote learning environment, which would be separate from everything that I just talked about. It would almost be like its own school within the district, and kids from any one of our schools could attend that school. And our third modality, as we already talked about, would be the small groups of kids from special learning, who have special learning needs or who have advanced English learner, language learner needs, who we, we would like to see come in fully so that we can make sure that those kids are advancing in their academic program. So I think the language at the state level is a little bit ambiguous because when I think about having kids in those three different modalities, I still think it's a hybrid program, even though our, the majority of our kids are going to start in a remote learning environment if the committee votes that way. All right, I'll pause again for questions before I move on to students and family support.
Any members have any, have any questions? Seeing none, we'll move on.
Okay. So student is basically one section of the plan identifies a number of the different pieces that we want to put in place to help families and help students. The first one is going to be a coordinated communication effort with families. And I talked a little bit about that before, about moving that to the school level and making the principal be the primary communicator with families. That is mainly because research shows that families engage more at the school level than they do at the district level. And communicating through the building will be more effective in engaging families and students, so we will be moving to that. Here we talk about the first two weeks of school. And, and Michael and Stacy, I think that you both mentioned this, having training in those first two weeks for our families on how to engage with remote learning and making sure that we're using those two weeks to troubleshoot any technology glitches or technology needs that we could, that we want to remedy before the student schedule actually begins. It talks about the daily office hours or check-ins that will be available to make sure that we're meeting individual needs of student families. And the advisory period to make sure that we're addressing student social emotional learning needs. We've talked before, and the plan addresses hiring of a parent liaison to each school. And I know principals have begun looking for people to fill those positions. And it talks about making sure that our school adjustment counselors and social workers are on hand and actively engaged in reaching out to students and identifying any who may have more advanced needs, behavioral or mental health or trauma that we should put a plan together for. And of course, we talked about our nurses and the health technicians that will be hired to assist them. At this point, we're going to hold off on the hiring of the health technicians until we know that we're going to have an in-school experience. Exceptions will be made for schools that house any of our in-person programs for English learners or special needs students. And even there, we might look at redeploying our existing group of nurses to assist in those buildings before spending the additional funds to hire health technicians at this time. And I'll pause there for questions.
Any questions from any members? Seeing none, we'll continue on.
The next section of the learning plan talks about special education, English learners, and early childhood. And we're actually still, I want to point out that we're still working on this section. I know that Mr. Mogavero had some updates this morning that he was planning to incorporate just to make it clearer how our English learner students were going to be served in each of the three modalities. But the, the main point that we wanted to make in this section was making sure people realize that we're paying attention to our special populations and that whatever mode we decide is best for the bulk of our students may not be exactly what's right for these kids. And so we will be, as I mentioned already, looking to incorporate different options for us to, for the parents of students with advanced special needs and for our English language learner students. Any questions or comments on that?
Any questions? Done. Continue on, Dr. Kelly.
The next section is professional staffing and professional learn, personnel staffing and professional learning. And, you know, I think the main thing to talk about here is that the commissioner and the Board of Education have given us the opportunity to do, spend the beginning of the school year in some intensive professional development with staff. And so we anticipate taking advantage of that with all staff members to focus on three areas. The first is how to be safe and a, and a safe use of. The first is how to be safe, and a, and the safe use of PPE, and safe traveling in our schools, and, and all of the other safety precautions that we've put in place. The second aspect will be on teaching and learning in general, and how that's going to change in the new format that we're going to have, particularly in the remote environment. And then also on how to teach well, what are the pedagogical aspects of effective teaching and learning in a remote environment? So we'll be working on all of those pieces. Again, this is a piece that is subject to bargaining. The school committee has the right to approve up to ten days, as long as those ten days end by September fifteenth. But it is the committee's choice on how many of those ten days they want to leverage before we actually start school. And I believe that with the, we had originally planned in the fall to have a September first professional development day and have students start back to school on September second. We have talked to the union about that start date, and if we wanted to move for staff only to the week before that, it seems like we're going to go forward with the September first start date, which would give us nine staff days that we could use for professional development at the beginning of the school year. And I would encourage the committee to, to approve those nine days. I know that it'll probably be Ms. Thai and Mrs. Sinella who worked that out through negotiations, but it's time that we do need, and it's time that the staff needs in order to make sure that we have a solid plan in place. And it's also time that we'll be able to leverage to do some parent trainings and make sure that our students and our families are ready for remote learning as well. And.
Ms. Thai?
And to that end, you have designed the new calendar that we would need to approve.
You, you will have to approve a new calendar, and I put a draft one in here for you to take a look at. And we'll be able to talk about that.
Okay.
Mr. Franti? You're muted, Ms. Franti. Mr. Franti, you're muted.
Oh, sorry, thank you. Diane, are we going to talk about the calendar now or afterwards?
I think it's at the, at the end of the, end of the plan. I don't know if you want to.
That's fine, I'll wait, no big deal, I'll wait.
The next section is on facilities and operations. And no, again, some of these are really building specific. So for example, arrival and dismissal flow at the building level. Building teams are working on what arrival and dismissal is like. And how we can ensure that students are not piling up at the entrance of school at the start of the school day. And some buildings lend themselves to using different arrival spaces. For example, at the West Revere, well, now that we're not going to have ELT, their arrival times will be more separate than they had been in the past. So that will alleviate the students at the Wayland School arriving at the same time as the students at the Susan B. Anthony. But certainly, those schools can also look at leveraging both the second, the middle school and the elementary main entrance for our middle school students at arrival, in addition to the entrance off the back near the cafeteria. So they've got a lot of safe options for how they can bring kids into the building. And each school will have to look at that individually, and think about whether or not we need to do a little bit of a phasing start for arrival. And of course, this is once we move to the hybrid or in-person, in-person learning. Class, classrooms and materials, we had already made a determination long ago that we were going to stick with the six-foot distance, and that's how we knew that we could safely accommodate typically twelve students, but in some cases only nine, or as many as fourteen, depending on the size of the classroom. And so, you know, when we begin our transition to a hybrid model, we would still use those same parameters, making sure that the teacher's face is six feet away from the first row of students. Hand sanitizer, we've got it on order for, it's already ordered for every classroom. I actually think it's actually arrived at this point. In addition, we have larger hand sanitizer stations that will be put in high-traffic areas of the buildings, such as the entry to hallways on each floor, the main lobby, and in offices. I know that Carl has made a massive issue of soap and paper towels, and has worked with our custodial team on protocols for checking bathrooms every two hours. So those, those pieces are there for when we do come back. And the same thing with the PPE, it's, it's all been ordered or already arrived, and we'll be present when we're able to come back in an environment that may, that's safe for us to do that. The HVAC system, I know the engineering firm that we talked about last week has completed their inspections. They were here right through last Friday. And actually, let me just check my email and see if I have received an update on that. I, I don't have an update on that, but I will check with Mr. Svensson when we get off of this call and see where the status of those reports are. Food services, isolation rooms, cleaning, we've talked about this, the safety drills. I know Dr. Belucci has an appointment with the Chief of the Fire Department to talk about safety drills. Of course, we're going to continue to conduct those. We're going to talk about training students and the difference between a drill and a real emergency. So we can drill with six-foot separation between students so that we can practice leaving a classroom and going through the nearest exit, and finding the space where we regroup outside. And we can do that safely using protocols as a practice. We will be emphasizing to students that in the event of a real emergency, they should not worry about social distancing and get out of the building. So those are pieces that we are, we are still working on, but will still be conducting as, as we should once we do have a return to school. And I'll pause again for any questions.
Mrs. Rizzo, we also have something that popped up in the Q and A portion of, of the meeting as well. But Mrs. Rizzo, go ahead.
So, talking about hand sanitizer, and I'm sure our nurses are on top of things, but will we have a standard order like we do for Tylenol for hand sanitizer for the students to use?
Yeah, that's actually coming through the maintenance and facilities department, not through the nurses. So Carl is.
No, I think you misunderstood, Diane. In order for, parents can refuse any students using hand sanitizer. And they would have to have, we would have to have a standard order from the doctor, like we do for Tylenol, in order for our students to use it. So if it could be a question that you can address to the health staff, that would be great.
Yeah, they can, they can log, all logs like that, any kind of parent medical request like that gets logged in our student information system, and the nurse would uncertain log that there.
I think you misunderstood, but, you know, like, in order to, for the nurses to disperse Tylenol to the students, we have to have a standard order from our school physician. That would be the same for hand sanitizer. So I was just wondering if we have gotten that, or requested that from Dr. Boxer yet?
No, so, but I think that we would handle this less like Tylenol, and more like other aspects that parents can opt out of or notify the nurse of if they have a medical concern. And that way, it comes up in the student information center, a system, and anybody who engages with that child can see the order that says, don't use hand sanitizer, don't let my child use hand sanitizer, just as it would say what their allergies are, or other pieces like that. Is that what you mean?
No, I think you misunderstood, but if you could just ask our, our school nurses if there is a standard order, or if they are looking for one, that would be appreciative.
I think I need to understand what you're saying, though, so can you try?
Because a hand sanitizer would be considered the same as Tylenol. You can't allow students to use a hand sanitizer without a standard order from the physician because of the alcohol content.
This is the first that I'm hearing that we're not, not able to allow children to use hand sanitizer.
Yeah.
I will ask them about that. Could you get me a reference to that?
Yeah, I can. And, yeah, if you could just, that's why I would rather bring it up to them, if you could do that.
Yeah.
I'll send you my information.
I'll tell you that I've met with the nurses four times in the last three weeks, and this has not been mentioned. And that's with Dr. Boxer and with Dr. Pond as well, and we have recently talked about students using hand sanitizer.
Okay, so a heads up, please, ask.
Anything else before we?
Mrs. Sinella, do you have your hand up?
Diane, while we're on the subject, if children could be exempt from using hand sanitizer, will they be issued gloves? I mean, how can we protect everybody if there's going to be a populace that aren't adhering to, for religious reasons or whatever the reason is? That, that could be a gap that, how do we, how do we breach it?
So, and I think that we can make accommodations where we need to. We're not anticipating that it's going to be using all kinds of hands as well time. We are going to have protocols for kids to go to the bathroom and wash their, or use this thing in the classroom to wash their, their green soap. That's going to be our primary means of kids keeping their hygiene in check. I will, I'll have to look more into Mrs. Rizzo's point that kids aren't allowed to use hand sanitizer. That's the first section.
Thank you.
Any, any other members? Mrs. Gravellisi?
Thank you, Mayor Rego. We all seem to be on a hand sanitizer question today. My question regarding the hand sanitizer was the freestanding hand sanitizer stations that will be distributed throughout the building and key points, is, are those going to be touchless?
I don't, I, I know the intention is for them to be, I don't remember offhand.
Okay.
I'll look at that.
That was my question.
The intention is for them, obviously, to be.
Thank you.
Dr. Kelly, do you want to address the, the two?
I think you just muted yourself, Brian.
Sorry. I said, Dr. Kelly, do you want to address the two Q and A questions that were, that popped up? Or do you want to hold, do you want to hold them for the end?
I'll note that one of them is anonymous, and just pointing to the school committee practices that we, that there's not a dialogue in, I don't, so I defer to the truth on that. Shall I move on?
We'll move on.
The next section of the report is in regard to transportation. And this is another piece that we are surveying families about. Our preliminary family survey indicated a very, a relatively low request for transportation. But we want to see if that sustains itself as we move forward. And so the parent survey that's going to go out tomorrow will include a commitment from families about whether or not they want transportation with their child, if we are able to come back to a hybrid or an in-person learning environment. But the limitations that we have are identified in the plan, and it shows the capacity level and a diagram that was taken from the Department of Education on what the seating structures might look like inside of a school bus. The three areas of the city that we're really concerned with in terms of being outside of the two-mile radius where we're required to provide transportation are Oak Island and Point of Pines in the Beauchamp area, and of course, North Revere. So those, those spaces will have special consideration in terms of transportation. But we will need to see how many families actually want to put their child on the bus to come to school when we're able to open, and how many prefer to make their own arrangements. There will be stringent guidelines. There will be a bus monitor on each of the buses, and in the diagram, it shows the monitor seen behind the bus driver. But our monitors will actually be from the middle of the bus toward the back of the bus to help with management. And there will be very strict guidelines around students who don't behave well on the bus, will not be allowed to ride the bus, period. And there won't be a lot of conversations with families about that. If kids are not able to stay in their seat or keep a mask on, then we're going to have to remove them from their transportation privileges. So I just want to make sure that that's very clear to everybody. Any questions on transportation?
Mrs. Rizzo?
Dr. Kelly, with transportation, if we do remote, how will we utilize the transportation staff?
So it's a, it's a really good question, and there are a lot of questions about staff at this time around remote learning. And you know, transportation is one, our cafeteria workers are another, our crossing guard, and even our staff. I think if we're in a short-term remote learning model, then we actually should do everything we can to involve staff in place so that we're ready to move into a hybrid model as soon as possible. But if it's looking like we're going to be in a remote learning environment for a long time, then I think that the committee really needs to weigh the benefits to the school district of all of positions, whether or not it might be time maintaining all of those staffing positions if we're going to be in this different kind of an environment for a long period of time. Some people can answer your question directly. I think there is self-communication services that will be needed, especially to bring our smaller for in-person learning while we are in a primarily remote environment. And there will certainly be other ways that they can support us that is helping with the distribution of meals in our remote environment. We still want to serve meals to kids every day. So we would still want to deliver those meals to the parks in Point of Pines and North Revere as we did throughout the closure and the spring. We could certainly use staff to assist the kids. One thing we're going to have to look at, and I'll bring up the country again, went about five hundred thousand dollars in red for our community service program through the closure in the springs. Fortunately, that we had a revolving account that was able to support that, but that's not something we'll be able to support again, or even double that if it were to persist through the whole 2021 school year. We're really going to have to think about how we're going to make that work, even with our community eligibility, which we'll have newly for next year. We will have daily break-in, break-even points, already done the math to check that out, based on serving above a thousand meals a day, which is what we did through the spring and through the, and the summer. So we can anticipate a same level of service in the fall, but it won't support the staffing levels that we currently have, which are meant to serve eight thousand people a day. That's certainly something the school committee is going to have to look at.
Mr. Sinella?
Yes, to you, the superintendent. Diane, I think it would probably be advisable to request a count of bus students who come under the two-mile limit to see if. request a count of bus students who come under the two-mile limit to see if we have to start rationing, um, to help in the decision how many vehicles we need, um, you know, how many monitors we need and everything else. I, I think it's, uh, chapter 17, uh, under two miles with the exception of you mentioned North Revere, et cetera. I think that would give us an opportunity, uh, because there may be children often to take the bus that are under the legal limit that we don't have to transport. So I think that that may give a, a better picture of, of if we have to cut back or curtail any kind of, um, transportation. So with numbers not, well, if we do this, we're going, we, we may have. So again, that's only a suggestion.
Families to commit to that in the survey that we send this week.
Well, the survey, I'm not asking the parents. They don't, they may not know. They, they think that they're entitled to it, but, um, it's, it's two and a half miles under some instances, but its average is two miles. So there are children whose parents may be often to, um, to use the buses that we may have to curtail it for whatever reason. So I mean, this is something that's not a blanket that we have done in the past and accommodated literally anyone.
No, I know. And I know that we need to look at that. I think we'll better understand that capacity when we have a, a commitment to each family for each child on whether or not they want transportation. And then that would be our next, um, iteration.
See, they may want it, but they may not be eligible.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
I am thinking that based on our first parent survey that there won't be a huge demand for transportation. Uh, it wasn't the first time. I think there are a lot of parents who feel like they don't want to be on school buses and would rather transport themselves or have them walk or bike to school.
Well, the difference also is the first rainy day, first snowfall.
Yeah.
They're all going to come out of the woodwork.
Well, the, the one thing that we are instituting is a bus pass policy. So if a child doesn't have a bus pass, they won't be able to get on the bus. So it won't be that you can just decide on Tuesday you suddenly want to take the bus.
Good. Thank you.
Mrs. Rizzo.
Yes, I, I don't mean to back up, but, um, unfortunately, the woman that had written the anonymous, um, she just put her name to the question, um, not realizing that's what happened. Um, so would you mind answering that question? It's from Laura Losmos, Losmosos, and I'm sorry if I destroyed that. And it says, will teachers receive training in the platforms the district will be using, Google Classroom, Flipgrid, Padlet, whatever?
Um, so, so the committee, does the committee want to vote for me to entertain questions in the, in the middle of a meeting? This is a change in format for you. So I just want to make sure that.
I thought we were asking questions as, you know, as we went.
I thought we had public speak at the beginning of the meeting, but that's why I'm confused.
Public speak would be pertaining to things that are not on the agenda and this would be a question on, on the agenda.
So I think, uh, well, Ms. Francy, and then I'll, I'll.
Yeah, Mr., uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think, you know, for, for our own sake, we should do all the questions at one time. I mean, there's only one thing left. There's only the calendar, then let it answer all the questions so everybody gets answered. I don't think that we, like, sort of deviate what we're doing. Let's do all the questions at the same time.
Uh, Ms. Francy, you took the words out of my mouth that I, I think we should, we should at the end of the, the, uh, discussion, um, entertain the, we'll take a motion to entertain the Q and A and then we'll, we'll go from there. Cause it is a little different than what we've done in the past, but, um, I think it's important that we do maybe address any questions that may be out there.
Okay. Anything else on transportation? All right. So the last, uh, piece of the reopening plan is a draft calendar, um, which we've put together. You can take a look at that. You'll notice it indicates, um, nine days. Uh, nine days for professional development at the start of the school year. Um, that would be September 1st, 2nd, and 3rd. The fourth is the traditional Friday before Labor Day. And then, um, the seventh is the holiday for Labor Day. We would continue through that week with professional development and start the next day, next week with two days of professional development, um, followed by, uh, the start of school on the 16th. And that, of course, start of school would be the start of our remote learning program. Um, we've mapped out through, um, the first semester. Um, one thing that you'll notice is we removed the half-days on Wednesdays. We thought for, um, continuity purposes that it would be better not to have those half-days, especially because we are working into teacher schedules with a um, but again, that's subject to negotiations with the union. Um, what this calendar seeks to do is identify for parents what days the holidays are and when there won't be school. And a lot of that is maintaining our traditional standard of, uh, the half-day, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving and then, uh, the holiday on Thanksgiving and a closed day that Friday, Vacation Day. Um, and you can take a peek at the rest of it. So we wanted parents and families to be able to plan somewhat for the year. Um, there are no parent-teacher conferences identified here. Those we anticipate will happen, uh, remotely and be scheduled by teachers and schools on particular days with each caregiver at a time that works for the caregiver around the time of the end of the trimester or the quarter. Um, this calendar projects 175 student days and 185 teacher days, which allows us to meet the requirements from the state and the commissioner as well as the contract, um, for a number of days of teaching. There's one additional professional development day already scheduled on Election Day, November 3rd, and that is the joint day that we do with the five DP with our focus on equity and inclusion again for the second time this year.
Mr. Francy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Di, Diane, just one quick question, or two of them. The last day we have is the 21st, but I think on your calendar, you have the 23rd in June, if I'm looking at it correctly.
It's the 23rd.
Well, then we got the 21st on the calendar then.
You're right. Sorry. That should say the 21st in the margin.
Okay. And then my other question is, um, and from February on, we have early release. Are we still doing early release if the kids are not in school?
I don't anticipate that, but I feel like we could wait a little bit until we get further in the school year and see where we are. Um, so we just kind of left the second half of the year in more of a traditional schedule format with parent conferences identified, with half-days identified. Um, it might be that when we get to December, we're looking at changing the whole second half of the year as well.
Thank you.
Mrs. Rizzo.
Dr. Kelly, can you tell us what type of timelines that we will use to reevaluate the plans going forward?
I, I'd like to call it continuous. I think that we should always be looking at it. We're going to be monitoring the numbers that come out from the, from the state, uh, in terms of our local, um, numbers every single week. We have been doing that all along, which is, uh, why we started to forecast out the issue of this 22% positivity rate a couple of weeks ago, which was an extreme jump from what we had the week before. Um, and, you know, we have to continue to monitor that, uh, on a continual basis.
I, and I agree, we have to be fluid, but is it possible maybe if we do first quarter, let's say, remote and then a few weeks prior to that, so that there's some, some kind of timeline, you know, and maybe a few weeks prior to it, look at it, see what's going to happen. That way it gives families in our educators and staff a chance to get ready for the next phase.
Yeah. I mean, I think that's a, that would be a wise thing to do have some kind of a timeline. I don't know that 10 weeks. We are right now, um, still from the start of school. So we've tracked out 14 weeks now. I think it makes sense to say that, you know, this is where we're going to be until maybe October 16th. I'm looking at the calendar now. Um, you know, that week after, we might want to make a transition if it's possible. Um, I mean, I'm really hopeful that the work that the mayor has done over the weekend and after is going to cut our numbers down again and hopefully people will start paying more attention to social distancing and making sure that they're protecting not only themselves but the other people in the community. Um, if that happens and we can break the positivity down, then we can wait extra time to reopen. Um, I think everybody really needs to start working to prepare themselves for the idea that we could be switching at any point in time. And the same thing could be true if we come back to school in a hybrid model. Everybody needs to be ready to switch very quickly to often vote if we start seeing any cases in the school habit or anything like that. We really are in a state here. We can't say we're going to take 12 and 15 weeks to think about how we're going to change every time we need to change. But I can, I, your point about having some kind of a guideline makes sense.
Any other members?
Mrs. Gravellisi has her hand up.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Gravellisi. You're on my second page. I apologize. I had to scroll over.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've had my hand up all along. I was wondering why you didn't see me. Um, my question, uh, Dr. Kelly, is the nine days of PD for the teachers. Will that be in-person or remote? And if it is in-person, how will you separate the staff to make it safe?
Yeah, I, well, I, again, that's something that's subject to negotiation, but, um, we would want at least part of that PD to be in-person. Um, the staff needs to come in and see their room and see their building and see what they need and be able to tell us all of that and understand what PPE is present and, um, understand how the building operates now and what the social distancing protocols are. And, um, I don't anticipate that it would be unsafe at all to ask people to come in and be in a room by themselves.
Okay. So you would have them, not everybody would be together. That was my question.
We would not, for, for example, I'll use the high school as an extreme example. We're not going to gather 140 staff members in one room. No. Nope.
Thank you.
But I mean, by way of example, um, Danielle, Richie, and I are in our respective offices just a few feet away from each other right now. And Doc normally would be across the hall from us, but he's on what we call these days as vacation. Not much of a vacation, but that's where he is today.
Any other members? Mrs. Rizzo.
Sorry, I, I just, one last thing I just wanted to ask and then I'm completely done, maybe. Um, so I know this will not be a popular statement, but I was, um, if, if there is remote, what is the likelihood of fall sports in our city?
That's a great question.
I mean, I, I, you know, I looked at it as if we're not safe enough to be nine students in the classroom for hybrid, how do you put 40 students on a football field? I mean, you could probably do it with golf. You could probably tennis, but I, I don't know. Just something to keep in the back of the mind when we're discussing whether it be RTA or, um, I know it's not a popular thing, but I said it. That's me.
I know that, um, the commissioner has hinted that his guidance will say that if you're a remote in my, in, in a remote environment, you cannot have, um, fall sports. So there is some of that out there. Um, I, as I, I've communicated to the committee before that I feel like those are some of the things that are really important to kids and they engage with coaches in ways that they don't engage with teachers. And sometimes the coach can really push a kid academically in a way that makes them get the work done so that they can pass. Um, so I don't want that to be lost on us. Um, I guess like some of the other physicians that we talked about earlier, we have to think about whether it makes sense to have, to fund a coaching program, um, while we are in a remote, a fully remote environment. And I guess I'd say the same about clubs and activities.
I just hope, MIAA meets in two weeks and I'm just hoping they maybe make our answers a little bit easier and decide what they want to do with fall sports. Right now, the cancellation of tournaments for fall sports is, um, very questionable. Um, and it just seems like, um, most of the cities and towns do not want to worry about the tournaments, but they don't mind having games against, um, anyone in their, um, local area.
Uh, Ms. Francy, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, just one quick thing. Yes, this, thank you, Mr. Chairman, that I heard on TV today that I think the governor or somebody is supposed to make a statement about the fall sports, what they're going to do. I mean, we all know the preliminary ones that are supposed to start September 14th, but that doesn't look like it's going to happen. But hopefully they'll come up with a statement to at least give us some guidance of what we're going to do. But it's anybody's guess what's really going to happen. Hopefully they'll give us some sort of inclination which way they're going to go today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Francy. Uh, Ms. Ty? Yeah. Ms. Ty, you're, you're muted.
Okay, now, uh, I was going to say pretty much the same thing, that, um, this has been an ongoing conversation in the sports pages of the Globe, day after day after day. And we really need the governor, uh, to step in here and give us some guidance on this. I think that the guidance on many things has been woefully lacking. And it would be extremely helpful if we were all on the same page with this and that we knew ahead of time so that we could prepare for those things about what we want to do with the coaches. And I, I've been one that says that the coaches do far more, far more than just coaching, how to, how to, uh, carry through or execute some of the plays that they have learned, far more than that. And, uh, and, but everybody needs to know what they're going to do with their lives. And, uh, we need something sooner rather than later. So if you have the governor's ear, Mr. Mayor, maybe you could put a little bug in it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ty. We've been putting lots of bugs in lots of people's ears about everything that's going on and.
I know.
I, you know, I, I'll say this, that, you know, there are, um, obviously a lot of difficult, um, decisions that we've got in front of us and a lot of, um, you know, uh, things that, uh, may not be, uh, very popular, but, uh, we have to do what we need to do with the data that we have and.
Right.
You know, and even, you know, back to Dr.'s, Dr. Kelly's earlier point around our members and what we've seen, that positivity rate, you know, it's not the end-all, be-all to, um, as a data point for what, for, um, where you are, but it's really the best metric that everyone from the federal government and from the federal response, um, of COVID to down to cities and towns are, are looking at in terms of kind of seeing what's happening and. and, and trying to be ahead of, of what may be coming in a second surge or a second wave. So when we saw those numbers of 6% positivity with all the testing that's been going on in the city, I know a lot of people think that the, the number of tests that are happening in the city would mean that our, our positivity rate would increase. It, it's actually opposite. Um, so if you think of your batting average, right? The more at-bats you have, the lower your average is probably gonna be. Um, and so, uh, we were hoping that with the additional testing in the city that we would actually see that positivity rate come down. Um, and I think that was an assumption that we had. And, and, uh, when we didn't see it, when we saw it continue to be over the 6% marker, that was something that was really, uh, eye-opening and eye-catching. Um, and just this morning, we have 13 cases that are, uh, are new positive cases for the city. So we'll probably have, you know, upwards maybe of 20 cases new for the end of the day. And, um, of those 13, only one of them came from, uh, the testing site at the high school. So there's a couple, there's some interesting information that's coming out of that, but, um, the testing, I think a lot of people just, um, kind of assume that, well, there's more testing happening, so of course you're gonna see these numbers increased when, you know, our positivity rate, which is the rate at which people are testing positive in the community and that, that we know are in the community, um, that, that rate should be, you know, it, it's, for the entire Commonwealth, it's around 2%. Um, and, you know, Chelsea just went, uh, just in their, in their, um, in their letter from the superintendent about going fully remote, they referenced the fact that they're at 4.8 or 4.9%. Uh, like I said, we're at 6, and so that's a really, um, you know, troubling number, and we wanna, we wanna see that number come down.
Mr. Mayor, I, I think a lot of people are confused in the fact too that they believe, no matter where you're from, those numbers stay in Revere, which is not true. They take the address and the information, and those numbers are not incorporated into ours.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great point. Um, Mrs. Rizzo, uh, you know, that is one thing that I've heard from a lot of people, and the fact is that, uh, that the, that the people who get tested in the city, right now, we know that around 50% of the people that, uh, come to the Revere High, uh, site to get tested are from the city of Revere. The other 50 are not. Um, that the 50%, that anyone that gets tested positive, and this goes from, back from the beginning of all of this in March, when we had our contact tracing team in place, any, any number that's positive in the city is vetted by state officials and local officials. There's follow-up that's done. So we're vet, in that vetting process, we're, we're figuring out where these people live and what contacts they've made. And so we're confirming, um, we're confirming the addresses of, of people. And when we confirm those addresses, we actually have cleaned up some people who have given wrong addresses, and we've been able to correctly kind of attribute them to the, to the correct community. Uh, so there's a lot of work and there's, I mean, uh, there are a lot of great people that are doing that work, and our school nurses have been at the forefront of that. And the, the work that they've done really, uh, round the clock and, and every day has been, a lot of it has been in making sure that those numbers are accurate. So while anything that includes a, a human touch is not gonna be 100% accurate, we understand that, but we wanna make sure that the numbers are as accurate as possible. And I think that, uh, that is one misconception that we've, we've heard. And, and we have an additional testing site that is going to be announced today. Um, we've worked with the state to, to, uh, set up an additional testing site, and that site will be down the beach. Um, and, uh, we want, I mean, at the end of the day, we want people to get tested. And it, and, you know, I don't, I don't necessarily care if they're from Revere or not. We just know that people should be getting tested. And with the beach having the number of visitors that we have, you know, we want, we want people who are gonna be in and around Revere to be tested. We wanna know where they are, and if they do end up positive, we want them to be able to, to quarantine, and we wanna be able to follow up with them. Uh, so, um, yeah, I, I hear that, and I, and I think that it's important to have these conversations because, um, it kind of gives everyone the ability to understand, uh, some of the details that go into, um, the decision-making. Okay. Dr. Kelly, I know we, I think we've gone through the entire reopening plan. Um, at this point, would the committee wanna entertain a motion to go through these, uh, the Q and A questions?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Um, let's take a roll call.
This is Bronston Rizzo.
Sorry, yes. Um, can I just make a comment though? Um, the woman that I said, um, was anonymous, she clarified and said she was not the person that made it. So it was my mistake when reading her email.
Mr. Dambrosio?
Yes.
Mr. Ferenti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. Sinella?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Orego?
Yes.
And am I reading the anonymous question or not?
Uh, so I, we can, we could read them.
The first question is, will teachers be training in the platforms that the district will be using? Google Classroom, Flipgrid, and tablet in the ENSOGE? The next question says, what about Seacoast High School? Um, I think that is referring back to when we were, um, looking at sample schedules. And one of our hopes, when we were thinking we were gonna reopen in more of a hybrid model, uh, was that Seacoast could come back full-time because the classrooms are so small, um, to begin with. Um, but they are gonna open in the hybrid model, and they're still, they're defining right now exactly what that's gonna look like. Because they had been more, um, invested in all in-person learning, uh, they need to do a little, they need a little bit more time to finalize what that's gonna look like remotely. But they are definitely working on that. Um, the next person says, hello, student committee, I think I missed the previous point. Uh, were their attendant questions aren't read because they were anonymous? Would it be possible to read them out, the attendees? I did not realize that anonymous attendees were allowed. Um, so my apologies if I've done that in the past, thank you so much. That was Laura, uh, Los Mazzos. I don't know if I'm saying that correctly. Um, and then we have a question, it says, not a question, more of a suggestion. Transportation staff could facilitate the delivery of learning materials to students' homes and food for families. And that came from Madeline Caballos, Caballos. And then Laura, uh, Los Moses verified that she was not the person who asked the anonymous question. Uh, wanted to know what the anonymous person had said, and sorry for the confusion, so thank you, Laura, for that.
Okay. So at this point, um, the chair will, uh, entertain a motion, um, to, um, vote on our reopening plan. Mrs. Rizzo?
I'd like to make a motion that at this day, on this day, that we start off with a remote plan and, um, look into, um, a timeline of how we can work out different plans along the way.
Second the motion.
Second.
Okay, uh, roll call.
This is Bronston Rizzo.
Yes.
Mr. Dambrosio?
Yes.
Mr. Ferenti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. Sinella?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Orego?
Yes.
All right, we will move on to the, uh, to the next item on the agenda, which is ELT funding.
So I just wanted to, um, officially, we've talked about this at the last several meetings, um, but we have notified staff and families, um, that we had, we're not, uh, promised the kind of ELT funding that we need to sustain that program at Garfield Middle, at, uh, the Wayland, or at the Hill School. Um, and so we are going the ELT program at this time. Um, the principals of those schools have been in touch with families, um, so they're aware of, uh, the changes involved here, in particular, the shorter school day that they will revert to. Um, I think, I don't know if anybody has any questions on that.
I do.
Ms. Ferenti?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Diane, when we did the budget originally, we allocated about 2.7 million for it. Obviously, with the ELT plan pretty much gone, is there any money out of that that we're still going to be spending? Or is it totally, uh, gone, period?
That was all grant money. And, um, we did reach out to Desi to see if they would relax the requirements so that we could, um, still try to do some expanded learning time work with students, um, at a reduced rate. And they were not able to give you any information on that. They were not able to waive popular requirements so that they, the students in those schools do 300 more hours that, of learning than their counterparts in other schools, which is about an extra hour and a half a day. Um, and we knew that we weren't gonna get anywhere near, but by example, Michael, you just mentioned that our grant last year was $2.7 million. The entire grant for the whole state this year was $4 million. So we were gonna be cut down in a, in a prorated, um, way. And so we anticipated we'd get only $200,000 from the state, which wouldn't be nearly enough to support the program. And the state was not waiving any of the parameters that we were required to meet in order to satisfy the funding.
When, when, when the reduction, one more question, when the reduction helped our budget or do we have to redo the budget? Because we already accounted for that when we voted on it the first time.
But you were, you were accounting for the grant money. Um, so it's separate, that was just identified, that wasn't in the portion that you actually voted to allocate and spend. That was, it listed in all of the, uh, grant pieces that we have on the back of
But wouldn't that have to be redone now when we do the final budget, that the grant is gonna be reduced by that X amount of dollars?
Uh, let me ask Matt Lewis that question. I'm not sure, to be honest.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Mrs. Rizzo? Uh, Mrs. Rizzo and then Ms. Ty, sorry.
Dr. Kelly?
Sorry, go ahead.
Dr. Kelly, is it possible if, um, the money is back for next school year, would we be able to reapply or, you know, the schools that are already in it, would they have first advantage of reapplying, or is it opened up from the beginning all over again?
We were told that there would be preference to the previous participants if the money was restored next year. So hopefully, that will remain the case.
Uh, Ms. Ty?
So, Dr. Kelly, that means that some teachers will have a somewhat significant portion of their salary that they will not be getting. Do they know that?
They do, yeah. We warned them of that when we, um, first began hearing negative budget news back in May. And, um, we continue to update them on the status of that grant throughout the summer. Officially notified that we're not, um, going to pursue the ELT funding, yeah. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other members? Okay, seeing none, um, is there a vote required?
Nope, this is rational.
Okay. Uh, so we'll move on to, uh, an update, uh, on Title IX language regarding sexual harassment.
And I'm gonna pass over to Dr. Galucci at this time.
Good morning, everyone. So as you know, there's been, um, there's been some changes to the Title IX regulations. Um, we received, um, memorandum from our legal counsel, and as such, we've updated the regulations to reflect, uh, the, the new requirements. Um, I had just got the, uh, draft, the finalized version of the draft that I had sent you, sent you a week ago, um, with some edits from our legal counsel. And, uh, as such, our new Title IX, uh, language now reflects the, uh, regulation changes. Would you like me to field questions? Do you want me to highlight some of the changes?
Dr. Galucci, why don't you, uh, highlight some of the changes, and then we'll entertain, uh, questions?
Sure. Um, so, uh, one of the, the foundational changes is that they've, uh, redefined what defines, um, sorry, the definition of, uh, sexual harassment. And who also, uh, works to, um, investigate those claims of sexual harassment. So the new regulations require the involvement of three different individuals to address sexual harassment complaints. Uh, the complaint manager, which is usually the Title IX coordinator, that would be me, uh, the investigator, and ultimately, a decision-maker. Um, and under the new regulations, all individuals involved in managing, investigating, and deciding sexual harassment complaints must be trained on conducting investigations free of bias. Um, so the training would be kind of a subsequent step to the language that's now found in the handbook. Um, in terms of defining who we had in mind as the coordinator, as I said, I would be the coordinator. Um, the investigator would serve as the, um, would be the assistant principal. The decision-maker would be the principal, um, as ultimately, if there is any form of an appeal, um, Dr. Kelly would have to hear that. Um, so she wouldn't be able to be... Uh, the new regulations, I'm gonna back up a little bit, uh, narrowed the definition of what sexual harassment is, and they've done it into, uh, three categories. Uh, one category of sexual harassment is unwelcome conduct that is severe, pervasive, and objectionally, objectively offensive, that it denies educational access. Um, and our legal counsel note, noted that this deviates from prior guidance issued by, um, Desi that previously stated that the conduct had to be severe, pervasive, or objectively offensive. Um, so that was a change. Our, um, burden of proof will be a preponderance of evidence, um, in terms of, of making the ultimate decision. Um, and as I had mentioned, uh, these regulations need to be approved by August 14th. And then once they're approved, we are required to provide a training to administrators involved in the management and best, the aspects of, uh, sexual harassment complaints.
Any, uh, members have any questions or comments? Uh, Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes, I just wanted to, um, make a point that this is being discussed at the Policy and Procedure Subcommittee that should have started three minutes ago. Um, so, um, I did ask, um, Ms. Gravellisi and Mr. Sinella to look it over prior. Um, so if there's certain things that they wanted to bring up to Dr. Galucci, that would be great. Um, also, um, I, I kinda wish we knew that this was being done with our council because it would have been good at this point for the policy subcommittee to sit in. Because prior to learning about this, um, we had already done work, um, with MASC on a policy. So I don't mind if someone else does the work, it would have been nice to have been included. But at least it will give us an idea, I, I mean, don't get me wrong, I, I wanna go with what our council says, but, um, if there's anything that, um, Susan and, um, Fred might want to add to, um, this will be done at the policy meeting coming up, to a station near you.
I apologize, Mrs. Rizzo, that's probably
No, 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 no.
That our legal counsel was looking at it.
You can't get fired, Richie, you have a year. You can't get fired, Richie, you have a good year.
I do just want to reiterate that Dr. Galucci had mentioned, what was the deadline, Richie?
August 14th.
The 14th. So we also, we have that vote, we would have the vote for the handbooks and perhaps we can, at the end of this meeting, set up something for the 14th, a quick meeting so that we can approve as a committee of the whole, any, you know, allow the policy and subcommittee to forward any of their recommendations to the committee of the whole to vote. So if people can be checking their calendars now, that would be great. And we can do something fast on the 14th. Is there anything we do fast?
All right, any other members? I do want to be mindful of the fact that there is a meeting that was scheduled for seven minutes ago. I apologize for that, for running over. Is there any other business or any motions before the committee? Seeing no further business, will the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
All right. All right, this meeting is, meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.